I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, October 19, 2023 to order. Well, Ms. Jazz, please take the role.
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Ms. Speaker.
At this time, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to change the agenda to bring executive session to the next item up for business.
Trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui? Second.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
All right, so now we will adjourn or we will recess to executive session. Is there a motion to recess to executive session for pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C11? Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Yeah, we already.
Well, we did a motion to change the agenda.
Right.
Now we've pulled the motion to go in the executive session.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
And trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Just roll call this.
Trustee.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
All right, so mayor, we're going to recess into executive session and return now.
This is for executive session. Now we resume the meeting. Is there a motion to, this has gone, done already, so next. Communicate on Smith. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Please note an important address change for your water bill payment. Mailing address is now Village of Glendale Heights, PO Box 8297, Carroll Stream, Illinois 60197-8297. Failure to update to this new address may result in the delay of your payment being applied to your account. If you have any questions about this address change, please contact the Water Billing Division at 630-260-6000. With the arrival of the fall season, the Village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glenside and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least 15 feet from any structure, including fences and picnic tables. For more information, please contact the Glenside Fire Protection District at 630-668-5323 or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at 630-894-9080. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee, just a two.
Before I announce the community announcement, I want to observe a moment of silence for a six-year-old Wadia and his mother, who was brutally attacked. And he was passed away. Wadia's only crime was, I believe, is he's a Palestinian Muslim. And a child has no religion. He's not Jewish, he's not Muslim, he's not Christian, he's innocent. And when I saw that news, my heart goes out. I was shocked, I was really shaking because the heaviest load a parent can adhere is his child's coffin. I hope no parents will go through with this, so I just want to have a moment of silence for Wadia and his family. Thank you. Thank you. Stop by Veterans Memorial on Thursdays for Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for local produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs every Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. As the weather changes, we will be moving the market indoors to the Sports Hub, so please continue to monitor our social media for any updates on the location of the market. If you would like to be vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya McCo at 630-909-5459. The Village of Glendale Heights is getting in the Halloween spirit. Halloween is on Tuesday, October 31st, and we would like to remind residents that trick or treating hours are from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also, on Halloween evening, we invite children 15 and under to come and trick or treat at Safety Town Halloween for safe and family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya McCo at 630-909-5459.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Please join the village board, the Village of Glendale Heights, police and fire personnel, and Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 for a ceremony at Veterans Memorial Park as we honor all military personnel, past and present. The Veteran Day Ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Veterans Day, November 11th. The event includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and a tribute to our fallen warriors. Please note that all village offices will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day. For more information, please call the village president's office at 630-909-5302.
Ms. Jazz, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is proud to present Brittany's Trees, a local tradition and nationally recognized organization that celebrates the holidays and memory of Brittany Bellini. Brittany was a young girl from Carroll Stream who loved Christmas trees, but unfortunately passed away in 2005 from a heart condition. Money raised from the sale of Brittany's Trees goes to support the Sudden Arrhythmia Death Syndrome's foundation. Officers will be delivering and setting up Brittany's Trees on Saturday, November 26th. To order your Brittany's Trees, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. For more information, please call the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Maritato, please.
It's time to get in the Halloween spirit with an at-home pumpkin carving contest. Carve and decorate your best pumpkin and send it over to the Sports Hub for a chance to win a Sports Hub gift card. Completed pumpkins are due October 22nd will be posted to the Sports Hub Facebook page for voting. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-260-6060. Join the Glendale Heights Police Department for Halloween movie night with a camp on Saturday, October 21st, at the Sports Hub. We will be having a double feature starting at 5:00 p.m. with Monster House for those 12 and under. Then, at 7:00 p.m., we will be showing Wise Out for ages 13 and up. So stop by and grab some popcorn for a spooky good time. For information, please contact Tanya McCo at 630-909-5459. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak?
During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on street sweeping programs, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
The next coffee and chat. Village President and Board will be Saturday, November 4th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. until noon. If you are unable to attend and you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302.
Thank you, Trustee Schroeder. We have the following proclamations tonight. A proclamation to proclaim the week of October 23rd to 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week. A proclamation to proclaim October 31st, 2023, as Halloween Trick or Treat in the Village of Glendale Heights. If there are no objection, I will sign these proclamations. Okay. Tonight, we also have the recognition of Glendale Heights Police K-9 Lobo, who passed away on October 5th, 2023. My condolences to officers K-Hill and the whole Glendale Heights Police Department. Chief Peppas, please.
David Denty has put together a presentation, a very short presentation, for in recognition of Lobo, who died due to complications from an emergency surgery last board meeting, when we concluded the meeting. There's going to be a memorial service this Saturday in the Civic Center lot at 12 o'clock. There's going to be quite a few K-9 officers and canines there, so public viewing will be restricted because there's going to be so many dogs there. But David has put together a great video for us today at the boardroom.
Is there anyone in the, sorry, you have the consent? Yes, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items only? None? Okay, you have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting village administrator, Doc Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Single man. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of October 5th, 2023. Two, approval of the committee and the whole meeting minutes of October 5th, 2023. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of October 9th, 2023, amount of $3,524,444.40. Four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6 entitled Village President and Board of Trustees of Title I, entitled Administration of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Public Discussion Ordinance 2023-70. Five, an ordinance to amend Chapter 17 entitled House and Garage Sales of Title IV, entitled Business and License Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Garage Sale Permit. Six, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement for professional services by and between Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights. Seven, a resolution determining the estimated property taxes to be levied for the 2023 tax year of the Village of Glendale Heights. Eight, a resolution creating the Village of Glendale Heights Transfer of Real Estate Inspection Program Ad Hoc Committee from the October 5th, 2023, COW. Nine, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing professional Phase 1 engineering services for the Mill Pond Drive Surface Transportation Program Street Resurfacing Project Schmal Road to President Street. Ten, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Concentric Integration LLC for the furnishing professional engineering services for the FY 2024 Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA System Improvement Projects in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eleven, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing professional engineering services for the 2024 Motor Fuel Tax Street Program. Twelve, motion to approve pay request number two to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades in a total amount not to exceed $125,100. Thirteen, motion to approve pay request number 14 to V3 Construction Group Limited for the East Branch Tributary Number Two channel maintenance in a total amount not to exceed $31,477.50. Fourteen is approval of the consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schroeder?
Trustee.
Can you call me? Oh.
Sorry, Trustee Schmidt.
I'm moved, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Trustee Light. Second. Discussion.
There's no discussion.
Roll call vote, please.
I have one question about number seven. Estimated property tax to be levied for 2023 tax. Yes. What is that? Is that a, like, do you give some more details about that?
Sorry.
Number seven.
Number seven is just the, is the first step in the village determining what the 2023 property tax levy will be for the upcoming '24, '25 budget season.
Okay.
The property tax levy is the same as it was in 2022, there's no increase.
Oh, okay. And what we will be discussing in November then, November 16th? I saw it, that it will be determined, it's saying, there's going to be a hearing on November 16th at 7:30 p.m.
The mayor will call for a public hearing to consider the tax levy and to just receive any comment that the public might have about the levy.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else from trustees? No, none. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Old business, there's none. The consent agenda is a bull, sorry. Next, old business, none. Any motion to, a motion to waive first reading on new business item one? Is there a motion to?
I have two.
Two.
It's not one.
Number two, right. Is there a motion to waive first reading on business item two? Yes. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two is approved. Number two, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 2023 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights.
It's 2053, not 2023.
2053 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Wikis Gaming Parlor from October 5, 2023, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-73. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-73? And, uh, Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Our discussion? None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes. The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-73 is approved. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anybody from public residents?
Can you say any of the agendas, mayor?
None. Is there a motion to adjourn? Any, uh, Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Trustee Schroeder, second. Roll call vote, please.
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schmidt, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting on Thursday, October 19th, to order. Will Ms. Jazz please note who is present?
So noted.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any additions to the agenda? Trustee Light?
Trustee Schmidt, I have an addition as well, if you could. James Cork Stormwater Sewer.
Okay, I'll. James Cork. Okay, Trustee Light.
Um, car show. And just throw other, I'll decide if I'm going to go other or not.
Okay. Trustee Maritato?
Administration.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Committees.
What was that?
Committees.
Okay, committee recommendations, there are none. Discussion regarding community development software, cloud permit. Com Dev, Mr. Todorovic requested this at last meeting, ask him to start discussion.
Good evening, Chairperson Schmidt and board. So you may recall at the last meeting, I brought forward, we had a brief discussion about community development's desire to bring forward a software to help improve our operations, improve our workflows, deliver a better level of service to our residents. One of the greatest pinch points that I've identified, working in the department for the last year, has been the time we lose in information management. We have effectively seven different primary functional categories that we facilitate, and that information to facilitate those activities lives on various spreadsheets, it lives on various software platforms. So what we would like to do is bring forward a solution that will help us better manage those activities. And what that management results in ultimately is the ability to deliver more effective service to our residents, faster permit turnaround times, faster inspection times, more responsiveness to concerns and complaints. And so you may recall from the last meeting that I asked to be able to bring forward the vendor that we recommended. I prepared this memorandum that I think I left on your desks about two weeks or so ago. I hope you've had an opportunity to review it, but I would kindly ask that we can invite the vendor Cloud Permit up to give a brief presentation demonstration and then take any questions you may have about community development's recommendation in the software.
Absolutely.
All right. And this is Peter from Cloud Permit.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike, and good evening, everybody. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to give you a brief presentation tonight. My name's Peter Rothenberg, I'm with Cloud Permit Software, I'm the director of sales. My colleague, Brian, who's been working with Mike for, gosh, the past six months or so, not more.
A little longer, yeah.
A long time, yeah, on this process, is joining with me tonight as well. What I'm going to do is give you guys a very brief overview of the company and our software, and I'm just going to quickly show you a couple neat elements of the software that the public's going to be able to use to more efficiently get services online. And then after that, I'll be happy to take as many questions as you guys have. So, I'm no good with these things. Oh, I'm already screwing it up. Or, could I just click? There we go, that's fine. We're pretty straightforward. So just a bit about Cloud Permit. We are a company based out of Fairfax County, Virginia. We do have our second kind of headquarters in Oakbrook, Illinois, sort of our second HQ. We've been building community development software for small to mid-sized local governments for the last 13 years. This is all we do as a company. We're laser-focused on building the best possible community development software for communities like Glendale Heights. We work with hundreds of communities across North America, throughout the US and Canada, and we are operating in quite a few of the states now, which we're very proud of. Our software is built out of four core modules that really represent the community development umbrella, our building permitting module, our planning zoning module, our code enforcement module, and our licensing and registration module. So these four modules are sort of in the scope of the project that we are proposing with Mike, and they're going to basically allow the community development team to manage all of their workflows, all their applications inside of one system. We'll skip to this slide. So the way our software works is there's a front-end component for each module that allows members of the public to come online and apply for a building permit, book an inspection, pay for a permit, they can apply for planning and zoning applications, submit code enforcement complaints, and apply for and renew any type of registration they want. Typically, when I present to boards, one of the first questions I get is, it's great that we can do it online, can folks who don't want to do that still come in and talk to Mike's team at the front desk? Absolutely, so let me just get ahead of that one. So the way the software is set up is there's that front-end component for the public to be able to access the software, and then Mike's team has a full-fledged system to track and manage these applications, automate and route workflow throughout the different departments so that engineering and public works and building can all work together, kind of pulling on the same rope to get these applications approved as quickly as possible. This image here kind of goes over that process for a building permit. The same type of thing applies for anything that Mike's team's going to be using the software for. Ultimately, what we're about is doing two things. So on one hand, we want to make Mike's team as efficient as possible, and on the other, we want to allow you guys to provide the best possible customer service to the public, right? A big gripe is that, you know, building permits can take too long in any community. So the idea is this is really going to help Mike and his team speed up the process of approving these applications, give the team more visibility and access to the information, and at the same time, just make it far more convenient for members of the public to engage with these processes. So from the comfort of one's own home, they'll be able to apply for an application without having to drive in and file all the paperwork manually. And what we tend to find with our clients is almost all the applications start coming in online after a couple months. You're always going to have some folks who, you know, like to chop it up with Mike and his staff at the front desk, but staff are going to be approving applications much, much, much faster. It's going to be easier for them to communicate and provide service to the builders and the development community and so forth, and it all works quite well. So what I want to do next is just give you guys a quick overview of what the system looks like for your So what I wanna do next is just give you guys a quick overview of what the system looks like for your constituents. So what you're seeing on this screen here, this is the front page when a member of the public logs in to the software. So if I wanted to apply for a building permit, I'm gonna create an account and this will be all on the Glendale Heights website. I'll be able to log in and, I can't quite see the mouse here. Stay in the limits. Gotcha, okay. So, um, an applicant can simply click one button on the home screen and begin the process of applying for any type of application that we use the software for. Um, we typically break it into a few categories like building permits, land use applications, um, planning and zoning applications, that type of thing. So an applicant would simply click create application, pick the type of building permit that they wanna apply for. I can't quite read this, but I think that says residential building. And they can select the specific type of application that they wanna apply for. Give their project a name. And then this whole system's gonna integrate with the village's GIS mapping, essentially the database of property and parcels. Um, so a great system you guys have that that we're already using. An applicant can do a simple Google style search to find their property. We're gonna pull in all the information about their property. And one of the biggest things that we talked about with Mike and his team the first time we met, I I remember we asked Mike a question, we said, what percentage of the building permit applications today come in incomplete, missing something? And you and your staff kind of laughed and looked at each other and said, well, they're all missing something. So, the idea here is we wanna make it really easy for applicants to submit a complete actionable application to Mike's team right from the get-go. Integrating the software with the GIS system is a big part of that. So they create their application. And then from there, I'm not gonna go through every little step of this with you guys, but you get the idea. The applicant can fill out information about their contractor, the plumbers they're working with, electricians, everything like that. They'll be able to fill any forms that they have to do in online in the software. Upload any construction drawings or anything like that, and then they'll be able to submit their application. And once an application's submitted, it goes right to Mike's team, people are gonna get email notifications letting them know, oops, that there's a uh, a new application to review. And staff are gonna be able to do everything from review and approve that on their computers, to using a phone or an iPad out in the field to do building permanent inspections. It sends applicants email updates constantly, letting them know what the status of their application is so that they don't call Mike's team and bug them. Uh, and it sends them key documents like building permits, inspection reports, invoices and receipts, all automatically. So it's gonna reduce paper, it's gonna reduce a lot of the clerical work that uh, Mike's team puts in needlessly today. Um, and just allow them to, you know, get stuff built in the city faster. So I'll leave it there and uh, be happy to field any questions that anyone has.
Trustee Light?
Oh. You worked at the department, well, somebody did. Um, what did you identify as one of our biggest problems?
Sure.
With the department and what can you do for that?
Yeah, so I I think really it came down to two things that that we focused on. Um, uh, one is what I kind of brought up before, which was those, just those incomplete applications. And I've personally been doing this for about a decade, I've probably worked personally with a couple hundred different municipalities across the country to deploy this type of software. And one thing you find pretty quick is everyone has kind of the same problems, right? When they're not using a a a, an advanced platform like Cloud Permit. So one is just application quality when they come in, and that's like forty-five minutes to an hour of extra work that Mike's team are putting in, um, before they can even actually get to work on the thing, right? Um, so that's number one, and the number two was the redundancy of 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 effort with certain things. So inspectors, for example, going out in the field, writing stuff down, coming back to this, to the office to type out reports and enter data into the system. That's all gonna happen in the field once with Cloud Permit, and inspector will be able to use an iPad or a phone to complete an inspection, click a button, it uploads everything to the system in real time. And then the third thing I should say, and 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 Mike kind of brought this up in his introduction, is just the generalized information management. So one question we asked Mike and we'll we'll ask any client we're working with is, how much time do you spend just looking for something, right? Whether that's an old CO or what happened at an inspection two years ago, or maybe you're dealing with a public records request or something like that. Today, the information scattered about, um, in different repositories, different silos, we're gonna assimilate all that into one spot and just make it easier for staff to do honestly the simplest things.
So I'd like to actually add to that if I could. Um, I also wanna point out to the point about information management that one of the greatest time sinks we have, especially from a code enforcement standpoint, is looking up old permit activity, looking up uh, old records, they're managed in a variety of different ways. And so what this system does, the 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 real highlight of the system for us is we can open the GIS map that's integrated within the system. Click on a house and all of the data for that house that we've entered, um, in perpetuity lives in that one location. So we don't have to go search records or different systems or all of all of these various places that things might be uh, stored in, it all lives in one location. And so that, that is the function that allows us to be able to process our workflows much quicker.
Can can the, can this system grow with us as we grow? I mean, obviously, things are changing and it's rapid, uh, the ordinances are constantly evolving, can this grow with us?
Yeah, and I I'd like to kind of address two points on that. So broadly, yes, it can, um, and I think one of the big things where, you know, me and Brian and and Mike really hit it off well in in talking about the software is Mike wanted something where, you know, when when the the board passes a new ordinance, it's not a two, three week process to get that set up in the software. It's something that his team can do on their own without drawing down on IT department resources to just slightly modify the system to adapt for a a new ordinance. And I'll give you a classic example that we're dealing with a lot these days, short-term rental ordinances. Every city, town, village across the country right now is talking about this and and passing these types of ordinances. That's something that, you know, in our software can just be implemented quite quickly in a matter of a couple days. Um, so yeah, absolutely, the the software can grow. And, you know, as the village grows and the organization grows, one of the great things about our software is we don't charge for little things. So there's unlimited user licensing, so every time Mike adds new staff, he doesn't have to come in front of you all and ask for more money, right? Um, so there's
I like that.
Few, yeah, I thought you might. Uh, there's a few different things in there that I think really help the 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 software grow with any community. And over time, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of things, right? So we spotted the short-term rental piece, you know, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we started looking at that as this was becoming more, you know, we were seeing it on more board meeting agendas and stuff like that, and and we were really ahead of the curve in terms of having stuff like that set up in our software. So that when our clients started asking for it, we know what we were talking about and we could help them implement it quite quickly.
And the last question, sorry, I keep sucking up all your time, man. I work in the automotive field and I know how it is, working with insurance companies and stuff like that. They have a really great way to do virtual inspections and photographs upload for certain permits.
Yeah.
Is this something that this system may be able to handle, to expedite things?
It it does do that, so um, a builder, building inspector can go out to the field, take all their photos, do everything on site. Um, we do have clients that actually do this over FaceTime or Zoom meetings today, and they'll just kind of screen cap and stuff like that. Um, you know, again, going back to your first question, um, inspectors spend a lot of time moving in and out of the office. And with Cloud Permit, you know, we're big believers and inspectors' day should probably end with them going home from the last job site. You know, unless they have some other thing that they need to do back at the office, right? We want them out in the field doing as many inspections as they can in a day.
Get the right stuff in the right direction, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, so you mentioned that, you know, it's gonna be a new application. Uh, what about the previous permits and application? Who will be entering that in the database? Is that your company?
Yeah, so the migration of the data is included in the scope of the software. Um, it's never as simple as we just take it and put it in. Um, data migration is a really critical and important part of the process, so we're gonna be working tandem with Mike's team to make sure that we understand that data, uh, and then we work together to get it into the system.
So basically, you will be scanning and putting it under as a PDF or you will be doing?
Not quite, we'll be taking it out of the old system, um, or the old database, I should say, and uh, we'll be migrating that data over digitally.
So you basically already have a database of old, uh?
We do, we do.
Okay.
I kind of glossed over this earlier and and maybe this is a good time to jump in a little bit. So as a part of our process, we we involve both the finance and information systems departments, and they were really involved in in helping us understand what what things needed to integrate and interface. Um, and so as we were discussing the the opportunities, uh, one of the things that we decided was we wanted to bring forward as much of the information as we could. And so, uh, my understanding of the process is, it's going to pull that, we're basically gonna package up the information out of, out of central square. And uh, I I guess, uh, the deliver, that that file would be like, uh, some sort of CSV?
Something like that.
Something like that, and and then it's going to be able to be pulled in because all that information's already indexed. So that's my high-level understanding.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're broadly correct and and, um, you know, this is something we do with pretty much every project, right? Um, so we've got experience.
So basically, you will be migrating and, uh, where you will be putting this data and how secure your data is?
So, um, we are a cloud-based system, probably tell from the name. Um, I'll talk high-level about security and and please let me know if you want me to dive deeper. Um, the most important thing with security is that we're securing it at different levels. So one is the application level, staff's passwords can't be one, two, three, four. Um, right, so we're gonna ensure that there's there's the basic security parameters, you know, even the basic stuff you see when you go onto your online banking and stuff like that.
Do you have like two factors?
We do, yeah, yeah.
And?
And then in terms of sort of like the uh, the the platform and and infrastructure level security, we're cloud-based system, all the data is stored in the United States. All of our data is encrypted, both in transit and at rest. Um, the data is backed up in three different geographically located data centers across the country. So something pretty terrible would have to happen if we lost any data. And in our thirteen-year history, we've never had a breach of our system or a loss of client data.
Yeah, but let's say in future, if there is a breach of data.
Mm-hmm.
Who is going to be responsible and what kind of authority we have from you?
Uh, in terms of breach of data?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that that's
Do you have, like, do you carry any insurance?
We do, yeah, so we've got all the, you know, standard cyber insurance, um, everything from, you know, network security. Um, we also have a service level agreement with our cloud hosting provider, which gives us some backup as well. Um, we also have a documented disaster recovery plan. Um, if something were to happen, we do privacy training within our organization and, you know, Brian's done that recently to make sure that, you know, staff understand these terms and these processes and, um, you know, we're we're, we take this very seriously. We only work with public sector clients, we've been doing this for thirteen years and we have a spotless track record. Um, I'm sure you can understand from our perspective, it it doesn't take many mistakes before you've got a reputational issue, so this is a front-of-mind issue for us.
Oh, okay, and uh, you mentioned that, you know, so there's gonna be, it's a, a website, so let's say I'm a, I'm a resident, I will go, I will create an account and
Yep.
So once I, let's say I want a permit for my, for my door, do I get an acknowledgement email with the case number reference?
You do. You'll get an acknowledgement when you uh, create your account, you'll get an acknowledgement when you submit your permit. When Mike's team starts working on the permit, it's gonna send you another email so that you don't call Mike and ask what's going on.
Yeah.
And that's another area where we're gonna save them a lot of time. You'll get email notifications when you have payments due, when the permit's issued, when inspections are completed, and when your project closes.
And do you have an access of my previous record, like my previous permit, do, can I see those?
Yeah.
All this, that it's compliant? Because a lot of times I heard from the residents that the contractors opened the permit or or, you know, issued a permit, but they never closed it. And, you know, the resident doesn't even know, and then, you know, later on, you know, when they are selling their house or renting, then they will, the the village inspector, hey, you know, this permit was never being closed or this was, this inspection is left. So is that kind of information or the client, the resident will know by this?
So you're describing something we call zombie permits? Um, yeah, and we actually had a big, long talk with Mike and his team about this specific issue. So again, going back to what I said before, we've been doing just this for a really long time and and the software has got so many features to to help handle things like this. So for example, if someone's um, almost finished their permit and then they haven't done any work for a certain period of time that we'll define with Mike and his team, like ninety days or something like that. It's gonna flag that property to Mike and his team, saying this is a at-risk permit or there's something wrong, you guys need to look into this. And it's also gonna send you, the permit holder, an email saying, you're at risk of having your permit revoked if you don't get in touch with us.
Okay.
Right?
So the contractor, does he have his own login ID and and he can enter his information?
Absolutely, and and maybe to paint a broader picture, um, a a contractor developer who does a lot of work in Glendale Heights will be able to log onto their account and see all the different permits that they're working on currently, all the permits they worked on historically. They'll be able to use their phone to book an inspection out in the field. Pretty soon, the building permits in Glendale Heights are gonna have a little QR code on them, one of those, you know, barcodes you see at the restaurant, right? Builders will be able to walk up to their permit, scan it, and go to a screen where they can book their inspections online. Um, so there's some really neat features, um, stuff that typically our clients are really proud about when uh, when the software goes live, which hopefully, you know, around the March timeframe will be, will be live with us, March, April. Yeah, um, and uh, uh, yeah, it's it's gonna make life for the contractors a lot easier.
And my last question, uh, to you, Mike, uh, are you thinking about, am I getting meeting this, um, software with plan commission, like, you know, like the application comes in the plan commission? So something for us, instead of going through that bundle of this, like, you know, if it will be available, like via our login, so we can see what applications comes for our plan commission?
So so I highlighted the software maybe while I'm talking, I don't know if you have something handy we could pull up, but a highlight of the software is we have infinite licenses, right? So we can provide all the elected officials, all the plan commission members, whoever's on a sitting body, uh, with the license. And so, uh, another highlight is, and admittedly of the of the seven vendors we evaluated, this had the the most feature-rich plan commission option. Um, it it generates automated forms, so so it it's it's for, it's field entry, we we put, um, the information into the fields and it automatically generates a form. And so it actually, uh, cuts down a lot of the staff time from manually entering a lot of the plan commission information. And all of that information can either be made available to you via a license, or I believe it can be made as a deliverable through email, is that accurate, Peter?
That is.
Okay.
And uh, I just switched, I just can't read everything from that screen, so I walked over there to change it. Um, to give you an idea, again, another great question. Um, this is an actual dashboard that we can set up, that you guys can access, that'll basically show you. Um, don't worry so much about the names here, cause this is just a sample environment, so we just kind of play around in this. But this will basically, think of this as your meeting management tracker. This is giving you a heads-up display showing you what's going on at your next meetings, um, what the name of the meeting is, the date of the meeting. And then that number in the purple there is telling you how many applications are on the agenda. You can open these up, view each submission, and then Mike's team's gonna be able to use that to, literally with the click, single click of a button, create a package, uh, for for you all in in advance of, you know, uh, planning zoning type meetings.
So we can customize that, basically?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Now, we don't like the term customization, cause that means we're writing code. The great thing about Cloud Permit, and I think really where we started to win Mike over was, you don't write code with Cloud Permit. Everything can be done basically by staff and changed by them, uh, in the future. So we want them to control their own destiny with the software, not to say that we're not gonna help them. But what a lot of companies historically in the space have done is, you know, it's the the razor blade model, right? You get the software and then they get you on all the little fixes and changes down the road. We're not interested in that, our business grows when we bring new clients on board. Um, so our interest here is to, you know, make Glendale Heights really happy, uh, make them a proud client, and, you know, hopefully use you guys as a, a great reference to grow our business down the road.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, I have one, yes, Mike, you can go ahead.
Can I ask?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm behind you. Um, nothing is free.
Yep.
And we have to talk anything as far as costs associated with this particular project. I think first of all, the efficiencies are really great, it's gonna help us out tremendously. People like me, we interact with Mike as a contractor in the sound and as a resident, I'm I'm all for that. Uh, but what the, what type of contract will we be engaging with, uh, with your particular company? Is this a subscription service? A one-time deal with maintenance program? And then more importantly, what kind of staff will we need to maintain the system, what have been taken care of?
I can go ahead and take this. So, uh, I've been negotiating the con, uh, the contract with the Cloud Permit team. What we're looking at is a three-year annual subscription service, so we have our annual fee for three years. Um, and then there's an also implementation fee or a rollout fee. So it's basically, there there's an amount of money to stand the software up, and then there's a a three-year subscription that we're, um, we're agreeing to to pay the annual subscription fee for. Uh, what was the second part of the question, Mike?
Uh, and the question was, what technical resources are we gonna need in how to maintain the system? Will we be hiring additional staff?
No, a- and in fact, this kind of in in some respects, staff proves us for the future. Uh, so staff will be trained on how to manage the system and even make fine adjustments to the system to reflect the changing nature of how we do business. Uh, the the efficiencies that we receive will actually unencumber staff from a lot of the time they spent doing clerical work, routine work, printing up a thousand rental license renewals, all of these various activities, so we can take that staff time and focus it on um, other activities that we would like to do that we we admittedly don't have the time to get around to doing. And then should there be an economic downturn for whatever reason in the future, we still have our our core focus built into the system, and so we can manage that with fewer staff if necessary.
Thank you.
Chester?
Yes, Mr. Peter, I have.
Peter?
I think the mayor has, uh, I think we're going down, are we going down this way, Bill?
Oh, you got the, you know, that's fine.
Yeah. Chester? All right, uh, Peter, work me through step by step. I go down to the counter, I'm gonna put in a new driveway, what is your steps? How does that work?
So if you don't wanna apply online and you wanna come to the counter, um, by and large, your service is gonna be not that different than it is today. So you're gonna go to the front desk, um, Mike, I think one thing we've talked about is setting up a kiosk where you'll be able to, oops, if you like, type in sort of like the key information about your project and your forms. Um, and then staff, you know, a few days later, once they've had a chance to review your submitted application, they're gonna send you an invoice for the, for the permit fees. Once that's paid, they're gonna issue the permit. Um, and then it's pretty straightforward, it's it's not gonna be that, that different if you wanna continue to have over-the-counter service. It's not gonna be that different from what you do today.
So just saying that we're gonna limit
So just saying that we're going to eliminate the counter downstairs then?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely not.
I can probably jump in here. I don't need that.
No, I don't have a single client that gets a hundred percent of their permits submitted on.
Peter, one question I have with this community is very diverse.
Sure.
How do you handle the various languages?
So that's something we've talked with Mike about. Um, we are looking at bringing Spanish language in, uh, to our roadmap today. If you speak a different language, um, and you've probably seen this online using software before where it lets you click a button and translate it to a different language. It's going to work. It's not always going to be perfect. Um, so we are going to be working, you know, over the coming months, you know, into next year on, on getting a Spanish language option into the software.
How many people are you going to be working with our staff downstairs on a daily basis?
I think that's, I think I need your help on that one.
Yeah, sure. So I, I think initially all of them, right? And, and in fact, this may go into a slightly tangential discussion.
Mike, I'm talking about these guys. Again, one guy working with us?
Oh, in terms of our team, uh, there's going to be about probably three core staff from our company that are going to be working with Mike and his team. So, um, I'm going to be there and Brian will be there from sort of an account management perspective. We're going to have a, uh, team of three people, including a project manager who are going to be managing the setup of the system. The most important part is the training of the staff and then ultimately, uh, testing everything, making sure it's all good to go before we click the big red button and turn it on.
Give me an estimate time. How long would it take here? Two months, three months?
What we're targeting with Mike is inside of four months.
Four months?
That, that's our target. Um, you know, we are typically one of the faster, if not the fastest company in this business in terms of deploying the software. And, and a big part of that goes back to what we spoke to before, um, which is that we're not customizing, right? We are configuring the software. We're taking proven processes that we've done with other communities like Glendale Heights and, and applying them in your own unique flavor.
And my last question, the big one, what is this going to cost the village?
Sure.
On a yearly basis? You want to take that?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. So I have it right here. Um, the annual license cost is $42,000 per year, and that's a three-year commitment. And the implementation cost is 32,000, bringing the three-year total to 158,000 dollars. It's going to take three years to do all this?
No, no, that's the contract.
No, that's the length of the contract. Oh, or length of the contract. Okay.
So total is 150K?
158. Yes. And, and actually, since we're on the record, I want to take, I, I want to establish realistic expectation. I, I've participated in some of these before in a past life. Um, four months, Cloud Permit can do it in four months. And, and actually the other two finalist vendors were even on a longer time scale, nine to 20 months. So, so they're exceptionally agile and aggressive, but it, I do believe it's going to come down to the amount of staff resources we can afford to invest in training, right? Because we do have operational needs.
Yep.
We have to continue to meet on a day-to-day basis. So I think six months is an appropriate expectation. So I just want to lay the groundwork for that.
Sorry if I blew you up there, Mike.
Yeah, no worries. No worries. I have to back off of that real quick.
Will this eliminate any employees?
No.
We're going to keep our present staff?
We are keeping it. Well, question for Doug. Uh, we, we have no intention to eliminate employees, but all of, a lot of the job functions, the, the rudimentary functions that our employees do will be built into the software. So it'll allow them to free up and be better utilized for other things that we don't get to presently. Okay. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you.
You got anything left, Pat?
I'm all questioning out here. So we're looking at about $50,000 a year.
Roughly.
Roughly. Just, uh, software, can everybody use it? Every department we have, Public Works, Finance?
Everyone can access the software. It's not going to do the job of every department within the, within the city, right?
No, but I mean, everybody, everybody can't, can't use it.
Cost. Yeah. Yeah. And to be clear, um, the, the cost that, that Mike's put forward is, is everything. That's all the software that we offer. There's unlimited user licenses. We don't charge for digital storage. We don't charge for updates when we release new features. So this is, this is really it.
So my question to you, Mike, is this, this is all relies on how good the people are punching in their stuff and the computer when they, when they permits. So they, they, they apply for a permit. All their plans go on that, go on that software?
Yes.
Like, let's say I'm building an addition. That addition goes on it?
Yes.
All the plumbers, the rubbers, all the contractors?
Everything will go into it. Um, so there, there's really two ways to view it. There's the people who are, we're going to expect to use the software, commercial builders, engineers, architects. Pretty much immediately, we're going to say, you need to learn how to use the software. We'll, we'll walk you through the process. Uh, the, the residents, the people who, who may not necessarily have the technical acumen or means, we're committed to serving them at the counter and bringing that into the digital environment. So everything will end up in the software. So even if we're conducting a transaction or, or a permit or a code enforcement ticket, whatever the case might be, we're going to bring all of that information into the environment with our staff resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary has a question.
Mary?
Mary?
Oh, um.
No, no, no.
Mary, I think it's for the board.
It's for the board.
I just have, I just have one simple question. Mike, if this is costing us $115,000 for three years?
158.
158.
Not 115.
You said 115,000?
No.
No, 158.
158.
158. Oh, that's even more. How much is this really saving us?
So, so the savings come about in terms of opportunity cost. What it's doing is it's providing a better, better level of service to the residents. That, that's, and I should point out that this is not, um, we're, we're not having a discussion necessarily about cutting edge. Every community in the area, in DuPage County, in Cook County, in Lake County, is utilizing some form of, of a software solution to manage these activities, to manage their operational tasks. Uh, I, I would, I would maybe go so far as to suggest we're lagging a little bit in, in having integrated something like this. Um, so this is the way the entire industry is moving and it will become more efficient. And over time, if we do hit a recession, we will be able to operate with fewer staff resources. That's not the plan for today. That's not where we're at today, but it, it'll, it affords us that ability tomorrow. So it, it is somewhat future-proofing our ability to operate.
So in the future then, we will be eliminating employees?
No.
No, it's sad.
No, that, I, we're, we're not eliminating any employees. We're, we're providing a better vehicle to conduct our business and we're going to be able to do it more quickly and more efficiently. But it does afford us a safety net in the future, should we need it, because it is quicker to achieve the tasks that we're doing today.
Any other questions?
I have a question, you know, number one is like a lot of questions. To how many organization and/or village cities you have provided this type of technology before this, you know? Just give me like the number of.
Yeah, so, um, broadly over 500. Um, and, you know, in Illinois specifically, I think we're at 10, 12. Yeah. Um, the village or the city of Ottawa, Illinois, just, we were at their board meeting last night, uh, to approve us. Um, and we're working with, you know, everyone from small towns that with a couple thousand folks in population to large counties like Boone County, Illinois with over 60,000 folks in population. Um, we work in almost all the states. We're in, I think, 35 or 34 out of the 50 states now. And again, we've been doing this for 13 years and just this, just community development software for small to mid-sized local governments.
Okay. Thanks. Number two, how much, uh, uh, load this technology can hold? Supposing there are like 20 people at the same time, you know, or 10 people. So maximum number of, how many people?
So last year there were.
At the same time.
Oh, at the same time? It's, it's infinite. Um, I mean, I think in an average day, there's over 40,000 transactions processed in our software, right? So not just in one city, but across all the cities using our software. Yeah.
Okay. Next question is, uh, what type of complaints those buyers, they have?
Sure.
In, in the past with you, you know?
So, um, like, like anything, it's a change, right? Um, and, and typically what we find is, you know, in the first month or two, staff are just getting used to it, right? It's a different way of doing things. And, um, the best example I can give is maybe if you get a new car or a new TV and it, it just feels different for a little while. And then once you get used to it, you love it. Um, so I think the initial challenges are always the biggest ones, right? As we turn things on and get things set up, it's, it's just that initial change management. Um, one thing I want to give Mike a lot of credit for is he's put us through the wringer about as hard as anyone I've worked with in tech years doing this. We've probably been in his office doing, uh, I don't know, a couple dozen meetings with him. And we've met with every individual department. Um, we've met with, you know, all the staff. I mean, I think Brian's pretty much best friends with, uh, all the staff at the front desk by now. Um, so we've put a lot of work in, in the staff. And I don't want to speak for your team, Mike, but the, the sense we've gotten, uh, throughout the process is just that they're really excited for it.
And next is, uh, how much time do they do fix that problem? That's a complaint or issue?
Yeah. Yeah. Great question. So, um, we have a service level agreement that, you know, guarantees based on the type of issue it is, you know, certain response times and stuff like that. Um, uh, over the last year, our stat's been that we've at least responded to every single complaint or issue or, we call them tickets that are submitted to our organization when people have, have challenges within three hours. Um, we offer phone support from 7:30 in the morning through 8:30 in the evening Eastern time. So a little bit different here. Um, and all that support's coming from full-time staff that work either out of our Chicago office or our Virginia office. And they're folks who've been working with us for years. And, you know, when, uh, Mike and his team throw around slang like COs and stuff like that, they're, they're going to know what he's talking about.
Actually, I'd like to give you a specific example as well, um, to, to illustrate that, 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 that what, what Peter's telling you is accurate. So when we began the process, I was calling references of many of the vendors that we interviewed and, and Cloud Permit was one of them. And, and I asked that same question that you just did. What, what, what's your complaint? What, what are you dissatisfied with? And, and what I heard from one of the communities was, we would like that they had a contractor registration, uh, feature set up. So when a contractor goes in, they could see all the different permits they're working on. And, and actually that's a feature that you guys just rolled out in the last.
Yeah, about two months ago.
About two months ago. So, um, that, that represented to me that they're actually listening to their client. So that it was a, it was a functionality that was missing and then they roadmapped it and brought it online. It's, and it's something that's available to us today. So I, I just wanted to get like.
Yeah. And, and I think one thing that should be noted and, and maybe gives you a little more texture on this, um, we do a software update once a month. We're never finished building Cloud Permit. Um, you know, it, it's like Netflix. There's, they got to keep adding new movies and TV shows to keep people on board, right? And, and we do the same thing. So that example with short-term rentals that I gave you earlier, um, is a great example of where, you know, we listen to our clients, we try and stay ahead of the market and we try and add new features and stuff so that the system's always growing. And I think, Mike, one of the folks you probably talked to was Boone County, who's been with us for quite a while. And one of the things that, um, you know, Drew Bliss, the building official over there, always says is, I just love how the system evolves. And we're, you're always adding new stuff to make my life easier. Um, if we want something, you know, we're not able to build software overnight, unfortunately. Maybe, maybe one day we'll be able to, but, uh, you know, we're, we're always trying to make that system better, both for, you know, Mike and then also for the public users who are submitting applications and stuff like that online.
Thank you.
Just, do you have an iOS app?
Uh, we don't have an app. And the reason for that is that the staff who use it out in the field need access to everything. Um, so a building inspector needs to be able to look at everything in the database about that property when they're out on the job site. So they use it through a mobile browser. Um, that also means we don't have to secure two or three different things, right? It keeps everything very tight for us. We are looking at bringing in an app probably sometime in the next 12 to 18 months, um, just to allow inspectors to do some stuff a little bit easier. Um, but the software is fully accessible out in the field. And the most common example, two common examples of that would be a contractor using their phone to book a building inspection as they walk up the job site and get it in their truck, uh, hopefully not where they're actually driving. Uh, and then a building inspector or a code enforcement officer writing a ticket or doing an inspection on the job site.
But don't you think like, you know, since the phone you have like ability to take the pictures and make the video, it will be more easier to upload it, you know, just do it and?
Yeah, I'd be happy to show you how easy it is just with the web browser on my iPad. Um, but, uh, you know, we've got probably a couple thousand inspections a day happening in this. It's, it's very easy to use. The whole system is mobily optimized. So when an inspector's out in the field doing an inspection, I could actually show you here if you'd like to see.
But he has to scan it, correct?
No.
No?
So what happens when an inspector's out in the field? Now I'm using a computer here, so it's going to work a bit differently. But if they're using this on their iPhone or their tablet, they're going to click this button and it's going to open up the camera roll. Now, again, I'm using a laptop, so it works a bit differently.
Oh, okay.
But it'll open up their camera roll. They can take photos. They can take videos and, and upload them. And one of the neat things is when a, a contractor gets their inspection report emailed to them automatically, it's got all the pictures in there automatically. So they know, they, they don't just see the text. They can actually see a picture of, of what's wrong and what they need to fix.
All right. Thank you. Got it.
Yeah.
Chester?
Is this going to take any additional equipment?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
No. So all of our inspectors currently have iPads for the field and they all have data. So, um, there, there's no issue with going on the web browser. And in fact, they'll be working exclusively out of it. Uh, the only, the only other thing that they, they might access in the field might be Microsoft Outlook. But besides that, all of their operational activities will be, will exist within this location.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
If we needed access to the documents, say to provide information to a FOI request for a resident?
Yeah. Great question.
Is it able to be printed or is it, we can make a PDF which we can redact?
Yeah. So we don't actually do the redaction in our software. Um, there's great tools out there that are built to do that. So we're not going to build something better than that. It would be silly for us to try. Um, so staff can easily, a, a great example would be a code enforcement case. Staff can literally click a button. It'll take all the information, a chain of custody on everything, a, a history of every action that's ever happened on that case, put it into a file that can be then handed off to a clerk for an FOI request or a lawyer if it ends up in court or something like that. Yeah. Um, and we've got one, this is something Mike hammered me on when we first met, which was record management. Every single file in the system is traceable. Like Mike could, for example, pull out every, uh, you know, toll grass violation in the last 364 days if he wanted to. Uh, and we know where all that stuff is in the system at all times. Yeah.
Okay. I've got a couple, a couple of questions here. Um, do you have an interface with the finance department so that when a invoice is generated, they know about it?
Yeah, we do.
They can respond back?
Yeah, we do. And, um, maybe Mike, it's better for you to speak to this, but we were, we've had some extensive meetings with the finance team about how that financial information's going to flow from Cloud Permit into, uh, into the financial system.
We have completely confirmed, um, we've been working closely with finance. We've confirmed that regardless of whether they, uh, whichever vendor they use in the future, we'll be able to deliver our daily transactions to them i- in a manner that is effectively easy and convenient. It's a single button push rollup every day. So there, there will be no issue with interfacing with, with either, uh, financing system or Laserfish, which is our records archival. That's our final home for every piece of information that, at least my department generates. Uh, it will also interface with that system as well.
Who is responsible for updating the GIS info?
So actually that's through the consortium we have, and I believe Public Works leads up that consortium. Um, but the, that GIS information is available to all staff members in the villages, I understand it.
And if I could add one thing to that question, when the GIS system gets updated, it automatically updates in Cloud Permit. So it's a completely seamless integration between those systems.
Okay. Uh, I believe you mentioned when you're applying for a building permit, you I believe you mentioned when you're applying for a building permit, you needed the parcel number. Is that user-friendly or can you have the common street address as the input there?
No, so they use the street address to search for their property.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, there are gonna be cases where there's land that doesn't have an address, it just has a parcel number, and that can be searched for and found and applications can go on there as well. So that's one thing we talked with the planning and zoning team about a little bit, if you remember, Mike.
Yep.
Okay. Are you familiar with the two different types of street numberings that we have in the village?
This feels like a trick question. I'm not.
No, okay. There's, you know, the one, two, three, you know, up to, what, two thousand and some. And then there's one like a twenty-two W one twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that compatible with your system?
Yes.
Okay.
And each piece of, each application is tracked not just only by its address, but also its parcel number. Addresses tend to change over time and especially as parcels get, you know, subdivided or combined. Parcel numbers provide us a data structure that allows us to keep track of information over vast stretches of time in a way that's organized. And then, as Mike said at the beginning, convenient for his staff to go back in and look at and research and pull information on.
And is there an input from the police department as far as code violations or any activities that take place at a particular address?
So we did not engage the police department with this, but we can provide a license to any member and staff. We can provide it to chief or any of his sergeants or deputy chiefs or whomever who might be curious or want access to that information. So there's no activity they need to do within the system, but they can, all the information can be made available to them easily.
The code violation that CSOs write for community development issues can be put into the system by the CSOs.
Okay.
So they're all in one place for code violations related to garbage cans and all the nuisance stuff that ComDeb would normally do.
Okay. I was kinda thinking of the crime-free program there. Okay, and last question, down the road with new personnel coming in, who's responsible for the training of the new personnel?
So typically, you know, we're gonna have a couple super users identified throughout the process of implementing the software. The way Cloud Permit works is there's the version of the software that's live to the public and it's the version that's real, it's actually being used. We're also gonna leave the staff with what we call a training environment. So think of it as a sandbox that they can use to train new staff. And then we're also available if, you know, Mike wants to engage us for training or, you know, stuff like that down the road, that's something that we can come in and do. But typically, when new staff come in, you know, the existing staff are training them.
Okay. Okay. Mike, do you wanna say anything?
I think we got one more.
I just have one more question from a contractor's perspective. I'll talk about efficiencies on our end, waiting for the inspection to come. Okay, which is a big complaint we had in the past where the window was from eight to twelve or from twelve to four, and we're sitting there idle waiting for an inspector to come. Now we've brought it down to like a two oh window, which is fantastic, but is there a way for us to be able to see where the inspector is in your calls so that we know and anticipate if it's gonna be an hour, we're gonna be at eleven fifty-nine or twelve fifty-nine? Because our time is valuable just as much as yours and sitting around waiting is a big issue.
For sure. Today, there's not. That is something we've looked at and I wouldn't be surprised if, sorry, I'm gonna begin with Mike here, I wouldn't be surprised if down the road that we do deploy something like that, but today, that's not something that we offer.
Just one thing, privacy-wise, Mike, let's say if I wanna, like, can I see the, like, your house in Glendale Heights? Can I, how can you see, how you can differentiate that, like, you know, that I'm the real owner and not someone who just wanna take a peek at, hey, what's going on in that property? How you manage that?
So the only things that, as a member of the public, you can see are in the system are the things that you apply for. So if I applied for a deck permit, right, on my house and you logged into the system, you would not be able to see it. You wouldn't be able to see any of that information. In terms of how property information's validated, property ownership information validated, there's a variety of ways that we do that. A common example is that, you know, an applicant might be required to provide a copy of a driver's license or something with the application. So there's a few different methods we use and, you know, different cities have different sort of comfort levels using different things, but that's something we work on in every single one of our projects.
So after that, then, then full access will be given to the, for that information? Let's say I wanna see how many permits I had before and what's...
That's not available.
That's not available. Okay, only the thing which I submit.
That you're working on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So, Mike, how do we do a rent, how do we do a rentals?
It's a very, well, from an inspection standpoint or renewal standpoint, there's a lot of activities that are involved in our rentals. We have a lot of rentals and...
I know, that's what I'm saying. How do we separate them from...
So they're fully integrated within the system. And I think there's a couple ways to view it. There's the inspection side where we have an iterative rental program where we make sure our rentals are up to speed and we do our best to try to meet the recurrence intervals that the Code of Order specifies. So we can program those activities within the system. The system has the ability to remind us to go do things effectively. And then on the other side of it, we have our license activity with the rentals, right? So right now, it's an extremely tedious process, labor-intensive, to produce all of these license renewals manually. We can, we can, we can program the system to automate that whenever we want to automate that. And then it'll just go ahead and publish all of that and then we can send it to the printer and run those print jobs off. And it greatly reduces staff time. So rentals will actually touch a number of, and if, in fact, most every process we do, will touch a number of these modules that we're recommending bringing in. So the environment's very dynamic. Everything has interfaced with the different modules that Cloud Permit offers.
Okay. Mike, how is this gonna speed up rentals? They have to go visually inspect it, right? How's this gonna improve?
Sure.
Make it faster and that?
So a lot of times when we conduct an inspection right now, we go into the field and we have to do research in advance before going to the field. That's the prescribed method. We wanna know where something was, that way when we go and look at it, we have an idea of what the condition is today versus the past. All of that information will be available at the fingertips in the iPad in the field. So if there was something they didn't look at that or a record they didn't retrieve, they don't need to come back to Village Hall to bet that out. They can do that right as they're standing there. So a lot of the lost time with rentals or inspections in general is that search for information. The benefit of the system is whether you're at your chair in the office or in your car in the field, all of that information will be available to you all of the time.
Okay. And if I could add one thing to that, because an inspector can do everything in the field, they don't have to come back to the office at the end of the day to put that information manually back into the current database that he's using. So literally, we've done studies, we're saving inspectors typically fifteen to twenty minutes per inspection. So the idea is an inspector just literally, and this goes back to what Mike's been doing a great job talking about in terms of just creating efficiency, we just literally can give inspectors more time in the day to do their jobs and less time in the office, less time doing the research and everything like that.
And I'd like to add one more thing to that, Chester, if I may. One of the things that I noted early on, it's a practice that we do out of necessity that is highly undesirable, is we take records into the field with us. We take the physical paper originals and we go into the field. And there is, you can imagine, there's opportunity for those to get blown away by the wind, set down somewhere forgotten about. It doesn't happen often, but it is, it happens. You know, you get a large set of plans, a twenty-four by thirty-six, you put it on the hood of a car on a windy day and you're chasing it down the street. It's embarrassing, but it happens.
Well, you are in windy city Chicago. I can...
That's right.
Though I'm told that's not why they call it the windy city.
So it's a practice that we do right now that we sorely need to get away from, from a security standpoint, from a documentation standpoint. And this software will allow us to be able to leave those right where they belong in the department. And in the future, in ten or fifteen years, all of our records, we may not have paper to begin with. So that's how we're trying to future-plant here.
Mike, if I could?
Yes.
You guys are somewhat involved in liquor licenses. Is that, your part of the liquor license process gonna be integrated into this at all?
I believe we can fully integrate any license activity. So in this case, Miss Sango, she facilitates the liquor license. So she would be granted a license. Now, she can't issue a liquor license until we've done the business license. So it's an iterative step, but she can look in, has the business license been issued? Yes or no? If it has, she can do the liquor license and off it goes. If it hasn't, then she takes no action. It just sits there until the applicant satisfies the requirement.
So she can observe what's occurring with the business license?
That's correct.
How for public right-of-way permits? That's something you guys deal with as well?
Sure.
Or is that Public Works? Would that be part of the process for permits as well?
Yeah, it's going to be a part of every process we touch. And so all of these different interfaces with Public Works, with administration, fire department, the CSOs in the police department, they will all have the ability to be a part of this information management system is the best way to view it.
Cause I know you guys wear a lot of different hats.
We did.
In this case, you know, I want to go into detail, you know, police does, you know, background check, you know? And then my secretary, she completes, you know, permit process, you know, liquor. So it's all combined into this system.
Yeah, she would, she would, she would end up working out of the system probably to generate the license. And it's actually desirable to do that because we can eliminate all of her steps in processing something manually and it just generates the form and off it goes.
And police, you, I mean, your department, police department and mayor office, they are working together in this system, you know?
Yeah, every department that interfaces with us will have the ability to access the information that they need.
Okay, thank you.
But just to clarify, I think the mayor's thinking that the background checks will be part of this.
Oh!
That's gonna remain separate. That has to remain separate.
Yes, background checks are strictly in the police department.
It's not gonna be part of this.
No, after they are done, police is done, you know, they will send information to this system that...
No, not, no, that's all confidential information. So that will be secured in the police department and Jazz will just know whether somebody passes a background check or fails a background check. And to give you an example, the way Cloud Permit can be set up is that staff cannot issue a liquor license without being able to note that a background check was passed, right? That's not to say, as Doug pointed out, like, that's what's happening in our software, but the software will make sure, and this is something we spent a lot of time with Mike on, is, you know, we want certain things to happen before permits are issued or licenses are granted and stuff like that. So those checks and balances become a lot easier when you're able to standardize these processes and have everything very clear in one space.
Okay. I mean, I still have little confusion. If background check is done, can police department say, yes, it's done, you know, in this system?
I think that's what he's saying, that there will be a check on there, that it's not gonna go any further until the background check is done. So that's what you're kind of explaining.
Yeah, yeah, that's one way it can be set up, yeah.
And you don't have to bring it into that process into the system. Jazz can just look and see what's a business license issue, cause that's really the only function we have in that process. She could jump in, it was issued, cool. And then it can remain in the existing workflow that you guys have. That's an option as well.
My question is, when police has done and say background check passed, so police can, department can send, you know, to Jazz through this system is passed, just passed, not private information.
Oh.
So it's your recommendation that that's what you want? I think that's what he's trying to say. He'd like it to show that background check has been done.
Yes, so somebody would have to authorize that. So there would be a permission level associated with it. And somebody would have to authorize that. That's not a department, a function of my department, but somebody with that purview could do it, yes.
No, not your department, but police department.
Sure, yes.
And if a background is done, is passed or no, we should, do we have in this system yes or no, you know?
Yes. Okay.
One more question. Do you have any watermarking to your files or security so that somebody can't go in and retroactively modify a submittal or a file?
Absolutely. There's all manner of security in place to prevent something like that from happening. The best way to explain that is there's a full audit log in the system. So, you know, if one of Mike's staff went in and looked at a record, he'd be able to see that. If they changed a record, he'd be able to see that. If they downloaded a record, he'd be able to see that. We can also put procedures in place to prevent certain staff from being able to look, see, edit, download, touch different things. So there's all kinds of security in place to make sure people don't do things they're not supposed to do.
Okay, but at the same time, there is a provision for selected members of our staff to go in and edit...
Of course.
To correct errors.
Yep. Think of it as a pyramid. And the people at the top of the pyramid have the most control and as we go down, they get less and less permission to do less and less different things. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Peter, do we need any motion?
I think it's looking like a direction to proceed a little bit more.
Yeah, so we're, this was a presentation on the software. You had the memorandum last board meeting, we had a presentation. With the board's permission, I guess, we're gonna bring forward a resolution for the contract with Cloud Permit at next board meeting. So we're looking for a recommendation to proceed with that.
Okay, are there any objections to the, from the board?
I think that's all you need, is if there's any, if there's no objections, then they have their direction to proceed with doing it.
Okay, all set?
I mean, we could still, we could still talk about this before...
I appreciate it, yes. Proceed.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Now, is there anyone in the public that would like to address the board?
Yes, Tika, that's you.
Please step to the podium.
My name is Martika King. And I wanna thank all of you, you know, really, this, you know, you too, the people here, because this is kind of amazing. I've been observing this process for a couple years now. And I've been pretty amazed at really the reliability of you folks. You know, you're always here, even on St. Patrick's Day, you were here, you know? I mean, you are a dedicated bunch. I wish, now, as you probably are aware, in the Constitution, you're our representatives. Unfortunately, the people of the town are, probably many of them are very sick, to tell you the truth, based on what they've been being fed by government, not totally on the local level, but state and national is pretty sickening right now. In fact...
We're talking about the local...
Thank you, Peter, I know. And I'm talking about something else.
We can't talk about anything.
I can talk about it, believe me, buddy. So if you would be quiet, I can finish quicker, Peter, you know? So thank you. I just wanted to say that I think really we should be respectful of one another. In fact, Peter, you know, you reminded me of something. You know how you were bragging about how you could cut down the time of the people of the town? That's not smart, Peter. That is not smart. When we, when you represent us, you do not cut down our time and act smart. That's stupid, Peter. So anyway, that's my point. But I just wanted to say a prayer, honestly. I just wanna say a prayer. A prayer because really that's what's missing from this whole thing in our country is God. So we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay. I don't know yet for sure, but God knows, God knows. Our Father who art in heaven, Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. May love forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Rather than... Not for you, of course. Anyway, love y'all. I'm praying for everybody. I'm praying for all of you guys. I'm praying for our town, man, our town, the people. I don't, I think you're kind of clueless as to where the people really are.
Mr. Chairman, three minutes.
Don't worry, Peter keeps good track and don't mind.
That's what they pay me to do.
I'm sorry, now you got me worked up.
Time's up.
Three.
Thank you. God bless you and I...
I can't top that. Are we done at three minutes now? Did we ratify that?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. As a resident, business owner, and as you know, as a taxpayer, I have the right to raise issues to this board that affects our quality of life here in Glendale Heights and ask tough questions no one else wants to. Unlike others that have appeared at this podium that wanna talk about hearsay, events that may have or may not have happened years ago, I always state the facts and focus on the issues of the village that's facing today and possibly in the future. I'm deeply troubled by the way our village president conducts himself and how he treats the board and the residents, including myself.[1700.79]
If I ask a question, the question is never answered. This time around, I'm going to pose the same questions to the board to answer and hopefully get a direct response that we all need and should know. Back on September 21st, I asked how much money have the taxpayers of Glendale Heights spent on Mr. Coker's lawsuits? Secondly, have we settled any of these to your knowledge? Third, what will happen to our insurance premiums and deductibles if Mr. Coker is found liable? And lastly, are there any additional lawsuits we as taxpayers should know about? Will the board please address those questions?
Well, I guess, anybody gonna answer the question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is somebody gonna answer him?
We lost the last lawsuit that was suing against a fine employee, ex-employee. We, Mr. Coker lost that lawsuit. That cost us $174,000. That lawsuit.
Wait, are you talking about the last one, Pat?
The last.
That's 247.
274.
247, $2,000.
Yes.
Okay, how much of that came out of our taxpayer?
Let me correct you on answer, it was not just against me, but there are six other employees, six other employees.
Mr. Coker, I asked the board to answer, because last meeting you would.
He gave you wrong answer, so I want to correct, ma'am, stop, ma'am, stop.
Tika.
Sorry.
There was not just one defendant, there were like five or six defendants, you know?
Actually, Mike, the last one that was, it was $247,500. Out of that, we had a $25,000 deductible. Yes, the insurance does sort of pick that up, that was a case that was, what do you call it, not mitigated, it was, um, help me out with the word, Peter, it was, we need to discuss it.
Settled?
Settled. And it was probably settled about for the best for 247, because it would have been over $400,000 if it went to trial. So we kind of lucked out on that one. And that cost us, you know, like I said, the $25,000 deductible. Yes, that's going to change the insurance rates, that's going to change our deductible. It will be upwards of $100,000 deductible, I'm sure by the time we're done, I don't think it's settled yet, but I do know it's going to go that direction, is going up, and I'm sure our policies are gonna change. We are gonna have a list of things that we're gonna have to watch for when it comes time for all this. God, there's so much stuff, and I do know that during our last meeting I had with the mayor, it was to discuss this very same case, not sure clear on what he was trying to discuss with me, but he did bring up the fact that he wishes to, he lost the last two cases suing Mohammed and suing Sohail, his wife, his son, and Adil Salam, he lost those cases. And he wishes to appeal those cases again. He told me he wants to appeal and sue once again.
So that means more money to the board?
Yes, basically, is what will come out of that, because if they're the same case of the same thing, Mohammed will still be covered under the indemnification, allowing him coverage for these same things to go on. So, the lawsuits are already put in place as far as the ones that he had lost and wants to continue. So there, there are more coming, and this is just a simple, simple ones, Jesus. We had, um, this is under, even one with, and this. We have a few, go ahead, I gotta, I gotta go through my notes, anyone else feel?
Just to give you a ballpark, and this is again, just a ballpark, what I am thinking is probably it's gonna cost us around half a million dollar, just on the legal fees and this lawsuit and all that. That's what we are gonna be ending, and plus, we will be, our insurance going to be increased and from $25,000 deductible to $100,000 deductible, so these are all in the pipeline. And also, this is not the end, this, there are some other lawsuits which are in the pipeline, which we don't know yet, but they might be coming, so it's, it's coming. It's, so, so this is just to give you, you know, since you asked the question, and as Mr. Light said, that my lawsuit, you know, was dismissed, and last week, the lawsuit for Suhil Bari, Faravari, his son, and Adil Salam, who's a private citizen, and this lawsuit is nothing but the intimidation, nothing but to scare them, and just, hey, I am the president, and those were dismissed, but at the end, you know, it's, it's the village, you know? It's the taxpayers' money, which we are spending.
Tika, if you can't be quiet, you'll win.
The insurance company, the insurance company dropped us. We have to find new insurance company by January 1st, because they dropped us, because all these, all these unnecessary, I got them out here. There's, there's no lie here, every investigation is here, not by the board. The board has nothing to do with these investigations, nothing at all, but we have to pay, we, the board has to pay for it. The insurance company dropped us, we went from a $25,000 deductible to a $100,000 deductible. And God knows how much it's gonna cost us January 1st, when we have to have new insurance for liability for the employees. God knows what it's gonna cost us, and, and we probably got a couple more pending lawsuits coming soon. So stay tuned, this stuff has gotta stop, it's gotta, it's gotta stop.
One other thing that I wanna mention, the lawsuit that he just lost, you know, the last couple of weeks in DuPage County, now he wants to take it into Chicago and have it reopened, that's the rumors that we've been hearing.
So it's a non-ending vicious cycle, basically, and who is going to pay? Taxpayer.
So what's our contingency plan for a secondary insurance provider? Are we looking now?
Well, we're out, our broker for insurance is out on the market looking for insurance carrier. There's only one, our insurance has not dropped, our insurance carrier for the last 20 years, Traveler's Insurance. There's one segment of the insurance policy that they're not gonna cover again in 2024. We're out the market to find coverage for that policy.
All right, thank you.
Mike, does that answer all your questions, or?
Yes, you gave me some numbers that actually I wasn't prepared for, that's astounding.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. No, thank you. Okay, I gotta ask, why do you need to keep suing, oh, Cheryl from Fullerton? Why do you feel, thanks, Kim, why do you feel the need to keep suing? What is your goal to keep suing? I've been in politics doing fundraisers, campaigns, everything. I've never met anybody to sue anybody the way you do, sir. I mean, I'm sorry, the sad part about being an elected official, not everybody's gonna like you, everybody's gonna say stuff about you, you gotta take it and brush it off. God, if I sued everybody that says something about me, I'd be living in DuPage County Court every day of my life. But you just let it go, it's called let it go, like the song. Thank you.
Thank you for your advice.
Peter, isn't there something we can do, there's gotta be a stop to this, we just can't keep paying these legal fees. I mean, isn't there a stop, isn't there an amount that, that we can cover and those that we can't cover? I mean, if you know somebody's paying your legal fees, then you don't care who you sue.
I, the village has no authority to stop anybody from suing the village, or anybody else.
I mean, we're not fair to the residents, I mean, these people are paying this money, and for what? We never had to pay anything before.
I'm not disagreeing with your opinion, what I'm saying is that the village has no power to do any of that. It's not within our authority to restrict someone.
Whose authority is it? I mean, doesn't this board have any authority at all?
Not to stop somebody from suing, no.
We don't care if you wanna keep suing, but you pay the bills, I don't care if he wants to keep suing.
So, just for clarification, the mayor, whatever suits he brought, he did so as a private citizen, the village hasn't paid for any of those. The village is paid to defend Mr. Siddiqui during his suit that the mayor brought. The mayor brought those as a private citizen, not as part of the board, the village did not pay for that. The village defended trustee Siddiqui. The village has not paid for any of the other people that we've mentioned tonight, right? We have not paid for any of that defense, right? The only defense that we, the village has paid for, is trustee Siddiqui.
Plus all the investigations, unnecessary investigations.
I'm just making clarification, that the village is not defending private citizens that had had action brought against them. And the village is not, the mayor has acted as a private citizen in these cases, and the village is not paying for the suits in the court.
So all these amounts that Pat mentioned, nobody's, who's paying for them?
Well, the one $274,000, the insurance is paying for a portion of it, and we have a $25,000 deductible for that part of it. For the one, the larger case, the personnel case that just ended, for discrimination and harassment and something else.
Yeah, just accept our rates for insurance.
Yes.
That's all it does.
Correct, Mary, the village is not financing the initiation of any lawsuits. The village is providing a defense for either the village, its employees, or elected officials.
Well, how much money did it cost us for the investigations? We paid the attorneys, didn't we? Didn't we pay the attorneys for the investigations?
Yes, I don't have that number in front of me.
They don't work for nothing.
An outside counsel, yes.
That's what I'm saying, we're still, we're still paying attorney fees, any way you look at it, we pay attorney fees. So now if he goes to court and he appeals it, don't we have to pay for Mohammed's attorney?
Well, honestly, in that case, the deductible's already been paid. Our liability in that case has been met.
So a defense would be provided, or an appeal, or whatever it would be, but it would cost the village no additional dollars?
Not in actual dollars, but as the insurance company, you know, the more ongoing suit, the more liabilities you have placed against you.
There's an old saying that I used many, many years ago, there's a real bad chicken in the coop over there, what you do, you chop the head off. That eliminates all the problems.
Can we send this trustee for education, you know?
I think you are the only one who needs education.
Okay, okay, okay.
I just wanna add one more thing, if you Google Village of Glendale Heights, so let's say I am a businessman, and I wanna bring some business to Glendale Heights, the first thing which I wanna do is I wanna do some search, what's going on in that village. So if I do Village of Glendale Heights, the first thing which I saw is a mugshot of our mayor. And that's the first thing which I saw. So what do you think, what kind of impression we are bringing or giving to the businesses who wanna come in when they see that mugshot? And I wanna keep reminding everyone, it's mayor indicted, it's not mayor, it's mayor indicted. This is, and this is a truth, this is what we are in right now. And you probably have seen the last two years, he's attacking everyone, he's insulting everyone, he's suing everyone, so that's what has been going on, that's, that's what it's all about, it's, all the village board is corrupt, previous mayor was corrupt, this was corrupt, and here we are right now, we are paying the price.
Basically, you are sick, man.
Okay, does anybody else wish to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to other items here. Before we start, I was given a newspaper article here from the Chicago Tribune, October 15th, 2023, from the real estate section. I believe all the board members have heard from taxpayers about how our property taxes are so high. Headline here is School District Buys Glen Ellen Home For $735,000. District 87 bought a house on Ellen Drive, which is the street which fronts on Lake Ellen in downtown Glen Ellen. At the June, ratified it at the June 12th board meeting. And they currently, they just bought the property, they currently are evaluating what they can do with it. The comment was made that it's a prime viewing location for Glen Ellen's 4th of July fireworks celebration over the years. District 87 is coming to the voters for a $20 million building referendum. $735,000 is not part of that $20 million, but boy, that's a significant chunk of 20 million. So, I'm not voicing an opinion one way or the other, but just when it comes to supporting the referendum for District 87, remember how they spend your money. So, anyway, Doug, you have James Court sewer project?
Yeah, so I'm coming to board to ask for permission to add to a project so we can bring information back to you later, next board meeting. However, as you're all aware, especially Bill, we're redoing the storm sewer at James Court and Pearl, and going down to Prairie Avenue. And we've been working on that project for six weeks, and they're ready to start patching. We have, that project costs $558,905. We have a grant for $280,000 of that $559. However, the grant only covers replacing the patchwork of the sewer that they dug up on one side of the road. So, the road is on our program to be replaced in the next couple of years. We actually have, it's about $100,000, we redo the whole road in addition. We have that money in our MFT program that we haven't spent this year on our road program this year. I'm asking for the board's permission for us to authorize us to complete James Court repaving from Pearl Avenue to Prairie Avenue. And the addition would be an additional $100,000 to the difference between 558 and 279. But we have that money in our street program for this fiscal year budget. It wasn't spent in our road program, so it's not additional money, it's reallocating money from our program to this project.
Doug, was that the, I'm with the Stormwater, DuPage Stormwater Commission, is that the one they grant?
Yes.
Do we have to go back to them and maybe get half that money, or?
No.
No, we've only been giving our village, uh, portions, we wouldn't get more.
Oh, you can't get no more?
No, we've only been giving 30% of the projects.
But, but we have the money in our program this year that we haven't spent. I would like to be able to just repave all of James Court to Prairie and have one solid street, and have it done, and we don't have to do it in the future.
Are we gonna do it or contract it up?
Contract.
Contract.
I'd say go ahead and do it.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not making any decisions, it's all for informational purposes only.
I'm asking for direction to let us proceed to do it.
I'd say go ahead and do it.
That means okay by me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, Mike?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Okay, Mr. Lloyd, car show.
Okay. I missed the last meeting, I'm really sorry, I did watch it while I was on vacation, it was kind of, it was.
It was a good one, wasn't it?
It was nice. I just wanted to talk about the car show, the involvement in the car show, the stuff that took on at the car show. I'm very involved in it, and I wanna say thank you to everybody on, within the village, on the staff. I wanna say thank you to Jessica, Gary, Chuck, Vince, Keith, my wife Sue, son John, Jazz. Bill Polian came out, and he did a wonderful job counting money, as he always does. We had a little over 200 cars that showed up. I was lucky to have the fire department, I worked with them with bringing in the stroke unit, which is a really amazing vehicle, because it's got its own MRI and it's mobile, it can go to where the stroke victim is at. I got them to get the helicopter to land in the field, which I thought was absolutely really pretty cool, I think everyone liked that idea. Really cool video that David did on YouTube, that's worth watching. The interaction with the fire department, the police department, all the public works for Touch a Truck, I mean, it was fantastic. Everybody really went above and beyond, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for all the hard work, and I look forward to this event again next year, and I hope to see more people out there. Thanks, guys, thank you very much.
Mike, regarding your car show, my son was here from Colorado with his friend, and they said that your car show is so organized, they couldn't believe it. Out in Colorado, they got 50 car here, 50s here, 20s here, back to 70s, it's all mixed up. They were very, very impressed with your car show.
Well, we built it that way, so we'll keep it that way, people like it.
So you just blew up his head now?
Yeah, I know, they didn't feel better, we got Colorado fans now, sweet.
So, Mike, you mentioned helicopter, any plans for giving free rides?
No, no.
No?
I was, I would like to see, I mean, I got to up it again next year, so we'll work on something even more cool. You know, maybe we'll get like, you know, the army helicopter, and they could parachute out of it or something, or drop line, I don't know, we'll find something.
Mike, one thing you can do is sponsor a burnout.
Yeah, I think Peter would have a problem with that. Legal just went well. Yeah, I, I think Peter would have a problem with that. Legal just went left.
We're, we're bringing the past back. We can't.
Bring the past back.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know what I'm gonna say.
Okay, and Mike, you said other. Oh.
I forgot what it was, be honest with you, so we're good.
All right, Pat, administration.
Oh, I just wanna say good luck to your new position, Jazz, now stays in police department. Have good luck.
So there will be no secretary? No secretary?
No, not as, not as Monday.
Okay.
I don't know what we're gonna do without you.
Well, you know, we were talking about it. I think maybe, maybe we could take turns. Maybe Mohammed could go up there.
Do you think we're as pretty as her? We're gonna sit in her desk?
No, maybe Mohammed could go up there, help the mayor.
Oh, I don't mind. I mean, I have a twenty years of IT experience and I can handle email, calendar. I, I have no problem doing that.
Uh, Keith?
Yes.
The helicopter?
Yes.
Well, how can we come into that car show but can't enter that Christmas?
I have no comment at the, at this time, but I'll look into that. I'm gonna talk to trustee Light about seeing what we can come up with.
Yeah, okay. I don't care who you talk to, as long as it's on. Okay, thank you.
Pat wants to come out of the helicopter dress.
As an elf?
Yeah, right.
Pat come out as an elf? Will you come as an elf? Yeah.
Hey, whatever it takes.
That's right.
Okay, Mohammed, committees.
All right, so again, I, the question which I've been asking for the last couple of meetings, where are we with the committee and the renewal of the department heads contract?
Uh, I have a conversation with the mayor every week about it. Um, we're at kind of an impasse on a couple of appointments on, um, a couple of the committees until we get some resolution to, for, to bring everybody forward. Uh, we're kind of at an impasse.
Can? Can you let the trustees know where the impasse, what departments you have the issue with so we can get together with the trustees? We gotta get the resolve soon, not next year.
So where is the roadblock, basically? That's what I'm asking.
Well, from the last meeting that trustee Meritato and the mayor had, they're, um, they're a couple people apart on plan commission. They're a couple people apart on, uh, property enhancement committee and they can't come to an agreement on the amount of people needed. They can't come to an agreement on the people for the amount of people needed.
Next time you have a meeting with, with this gentleman over here, let, let me get involved in that, okay?
No way. You are not allowed in my office.
Why? Are you afraid of me?
You should stipend to come to my office and.
I'm not gonna go to your office and get, you can get fifty bucks.
I have proof of that. I don't know how to pay you stipend for that.
I don't deal with idiots anymore. Look at him.
Okay, Mike, go ahead. Mary got one. I got another one. I just remembered.
I, I just thought he was gonna adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry.
No, uh, not adjourned. I'm not done yet. Uh, so Pat, you were in the meeting. Where is the roadblock, basically? I wanna ask you because you've been, you know, dealing with.
Committees?
Committees and the, I mean, how, how many years we, we do, we are here and we did not renew our department heads contract and why is that?
Well, department heads, I have, I have no, that's the mayor's job. Department heads, I have.
Why he's not doing his job?
I have, I have no.
Authority.
No authority with, with department heads. We're dealing with committees.
Okay.
Right now we're at a standpoint, you know, he's has things he wants. I have things that the board wants.
So what are the things? Yeah.
Oh, you know, it's. Some committees need people, some committees don't need people. We're looking at all the applicants and, you know, we're taking it from there. But department heads, it's not my, it's not my, I don't know why he don't, he ought to appoint right now. I'll be honest with you. He should make Doug, if he does anybody, he ought, he ought to appoint Doug. But now Doug is gonna have a lot more work since we don't have a secretary. So it's gonna be a little, little burden on Doug.
So Doug, you will be his secretary, like, you will be his secretary. Like, what will be your new role? I know you are acting village administrator and.
So just so everybody knows the flow, until there's somebody else put in that position. Uh, I will be working with the mayor on a daily basis on appointments and calendars and, and who comes to the office and visits.
Good luck.
Uh, the, the mayor's phone will be forwarded to my extension to be answered by myself or, uh, my secretary. So really, you know, I'm not dealing, I don't, uh, have any intention of looking at the mayor's email. The mayor's email is on demand. Uh, but far as the calendar and scheduling and assisting with a second person for appointments, um, I will be in charge of that.
So you will be, okay. So is your title gonna change or remains the same?
Oh, come on.
No, it's still the same.
Still the same? Oh, okay. No, just wondering.
That's what you're wondering.
Yeah.
Phil? So what happened is probably i- if.
Any residents, well, usually all my, all my residents call me. They don't, I mean, you don't ever get probably any calls from, I, they all call me direct.
Mine do too.
So I mean, the board, usually all the residents call direct. So, I mean, I won't have a problem with it.
No, I'm fine.
So I, I mean, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I never use secretary, so I'm fine. It's.
Well, I do when during, Jazz helped out a lot during the car show. I give her that. She is incredible. She's a very smart girl. I'm definitely gonna miss having you around. Um, real quick, uh, the committees. Doug, can we put something together where we can change the number, size of the committees? Because I know we, with the death of Wolfgang, and I apologize for not recognizing it, I probably should have. Uh, Wolfgang had passed away, Vire had passed away and he's deeply gonna be missed uh by a lot of people. I know he is on the police pension commission. Um, he's, he's held it, headed up a lot and that made me think about getting something put together for bringing down the size of the committees. Our plan commission needs to be made smaller because of lack of, of people and, and people being put on it. So we need to ensure that we can do business with the quorum. So we need to put something together, change that. Our police commission, I think we're talking going down to, um, no, police commission is fine. What was it?
Police commission is.
We're okay. Okay, so we're fine there. Anything else we gotta change?
Well, there was a conversation about moving plan commission from seven to five.
Correct.
We can bring something forward for a plan commission. Police pension, you need to fill.
Yes.
So you can't reduce police pension. You need to fill a police pension.
So how many we are looking at?
One.
One, okay.
And it's a mayor appointment.
Okay. Is police pension now taken over by the state?
No, the pension fund has been taken over by the state. Every municipality still has their own local police pension board to make decisions locally on certain issues. But the, the, the pooling of all pension funds has gone to the state.
Okay.
Doug, what's your procedure going from seven to five? Seven to five on the plan commission?
It's an ordinance change.
Did they have to go to the board to?
We have to create a new ordinance to reduce the size of the plan commission.
All right, what do you, what do you think?
Maybe we should have an ordinance committee. Is that all right with you guys?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think we should.
I will email the ordinance committee and set up a date, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, because we can talk about it. Yeah.
I got one more, Bill, and you're done.
Mike?
I just remember what other was. Um, the car show and the past, uh, golf course event that we had, um, the golf charity classic, I want to readdress the five oh one C three and bring this back. I wanna, I wanna talk about this because there's a lot of stuff that we miss out on because we don't have that, that, that status. I believe it would benefit us. It would benefit the charities. It would benefit a lot. Because more businesses would be more apt to be giving to us if we brought this back. Can we discuss this at a later date, maybe?
Perfect topic for your ordinance committee.
For the ordinance committee, five oh one, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll add that to the ordinance committee then too.
Yes, I will. I'll email all of you.
Mary, who's on the ordinance committee now?
I know that, um, Bill, Bill, aren't you on the ordinance committee?
And trustee Light.
And trustee Light. Uh, the chief is on the ordinance committee. Um, and Doug, I think has to attend all of our meetings.
Yes.
Myself and, um.
That's it.
I know Chester comes to all of our meetings. Well, we'll, we'll talk about it when we have our meeting. How's that? Okay? We'll set up a date. I'll text you all at one time. I'll give you a group text. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Light. Motion to adjourn.
Chester. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.